Yes.
We live?
Two, one. Mayor.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'd sure we convince city councils, etc., agency to the Westminster redevelopment agency meeting when I was 7:05 PM. Wow, Wednesday, April 22nd, 2020. And roll call, see club.
Yes, Mayor Ta.
Here.
Two, one. Mayor.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'd sure we convince city councils, etc., agency to the Westminster redevelopment.
Watching on video.
Right now, 7:05 PM. Wow, Wednesday, April 22nd, 2020. And roll call, see club.
Yes, Mayor Ta.
Here.
One. Mayor. Hold on.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'd sure we convince city councils, etc., agency to the Westminster.
So we have to stack it over?
Sorry about that.
Do we have to?
Yes, I'm not, I am not sure what happened, so we're going to do roll call again. So Mayor Ta.
Okay, here.
Vice Mayor Ho. Here. Councilmember Contreras.
Here.
Councilmember Doe.
Here.
Councilmember Nguyen.
Here.
That? I am not sure. So we're going to do roll call again. So Mayor Ta.
Here.
Vice Mayor Ho. Here. Councilmember Contreras.
Here.
Councilmember Doe.
Here.
Okay.
Here.
That? Okay. Just if anybody's watching this at home, please just turn it off or else it's just gonna repeat the whole time. Like if you're watching it from your TV because of the delay. That looks like it has settled itself out. So just if anybody's watching this at home, please just turn it off or else it's just gonna repeat the whole time. Like if you're watching it from your TV because of the delay. That looks like it has settled itself out. So just if anybody's watching this at home, please just.
Do we need to reschedule the meeting?
Christine, you're muted. There you go.
I am definitely muted right now because I'm trying to work with PCT and figuring out or trying to work and see what's happening with our feed. It keeps repeating. It keeps repeating.
What if we all log out and log back in?
Don't we do that?
Does.
Do we need to reschedule the meeting?
Christine, you're muted.
I am definitely muted right now because I'm trying to work with PCT and figuring out. Trying to work and see what's happening.
I'm gonna lock myself out. I'm gonna leave and then come back.
It keeps repeating.
What if we all log out, log back in?
Okay, let's.
Don't we do that?
Does.
Do we need to reschedule the meeting?
Christine, you're muted.
Um.
Is this? I think it's because you're on the browser and on the app. Do you want us to?
Does, does this work now?
Saying we're gonna, that we'll be back.
We're waiting for people to come back in.
I can put something up saying we're having.
Okay, I'm putting Councilmember Doe back in.
You want me to put something else?
No, I think we're going to be okay.
Christine, can you hear me?
All right. Apologies for that. I think we should be okay now. Again. So. So the roll call showed that all council members are present. We're all back. Actually, we are missing. I think we're missing Councilmember Nguyen. Still trying to come back.
Yeah.
Nope, there he is. And so for all of you who are joining us live, we are currently experiencing technical difficulties, but we are working around the issue as we speak. All right. Go back to that roll call again. So we have Mayor Ta here. We have Vice Mayor Ho. We have Councilmember Contreras. We have Councilmember Doe and Councilmember Nguyen back. So all council members are present.
To the flat will be Vice Mayor Ho and invocation will be Councilmember Nguyen. So please stand for salute to the flat.
Again, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please remain standing.
Please bow your head for invocations. Heavenly Father, Provider of strength, we pray that as leaders of our community, we might have the insight and courage to serve the citizens of Westminster with wisdom and truth. We ask for your guidance in making decisions that affect our community, ensuring that decisions made this evening are in the best interest of our city and all of its citizens. Amen.
City Attorney?
Yes, I have two items for closed session I wanted to talk about. First one concerns item number one in the closed session, which was a discussion by the council concerning 8200 Westminster Boulevard, the civic center. Currently, there is an E and A in place with Sheldon Development LLC that is being proposed. There, there, there's nothing binding. It's just merely an E and A to have them bring a possible development forward for the city. The developer requested a 90-day extension to that agreement, primarily because of the COVID-19 situation, also because of the departure of the city manager and the assistant city manager recently, and that's caused some delays on his part in being able to get some of the things he wanted to get done. So he asked for a 90-day extension. The council ultimately voted in closed session on a motion made by Councilmember Nguyen, seconded by Ta, three in favor and none against, but two abstentions by Contreras and Doe to go ahead and grant that 90-day extension. The idea being that this is kind of a last opportunity for them in light of this COVID-19 situation and the departure of the assistant city manager who was primarily handling this project to let him have a chance to, to, to put that proposal together, in which case if they're unable to do so, it might be terminated at that time. So that's the first item I wanted to report out. And there was a, on the motion, there was a condition that he has to pay all amounts that are currently due as part of that motion. The second item I just wanted to bring to your attention was Councilmember Contreras had asked that we add an item to the agenda tonight, walked it onto the agenda, which would require a four-fifths vote. It's a health and safety issue related to the whole idea of trying to get more testing. And he felt that there was an urgent need to just have a discussion by the council about ideas or options that the city might pursue related to setting up testing with the city, either a partnership with the county or possibly partnership with a private testing company. So I'm putting that forward on his behalf. He wanted to ask that that be added to the agenda.
May I add to that or is that clear? So. Can you hear me?
Yes. Yeah, can you explain a little bit?
Okay. Well, as you know, testing has been slow to make its way to Westminster. Drowning counties have, have increased their testing locations for residents. There are cities like neighboring cities like Long Beach that currently have testing. And we have different small states who are also creating their own testing. You know, we have residents calling, asking where they could go get some testing. And some of them even attempt to make their way to Los Angeles County to get testing through a different, what they probably would not be eligible for. So I just want to see if we could work, direct the state manager to work with the county to provide a testing site as soon as possible for Westminster residents. If not, work with the private relationship with a contractor or and, or and bring a contract back for the council. In addition, also like to pursue some federal, some funding from FEMA, Federal Emergency Management Agency.
Councilmember Contreras? Let me, let me just jump in because I think probably what we need to do is get a vote on whether to add it and then we can go into more detail about Okay. specifics of it. If, if, the idea here is that because of the COVID-19 situation, there's a bit of urgency on this and trying to move forward and not wait till the next council meeting.
So may I have the motion?
Motion to add the item to the agenda.
Second. City Club?
Yes, that was a motion by Councilmember Contreras and seconded by Mayor Ta to to tonight's agenda regarding COVID testing. Mayor Ta.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho.
Vice Mayor Ho?
She's muted.
Are you still there?
Yes. Okay, Vice Mayor Ho. Yes. Councilmember Contreras.
Yes.
Councilmember Doe.
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen.
Yes.
Yeah, that motion carried five to zero.
So would we add that to as 5.4 on the agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, that'll be item number 5.4.
Councilmember Contreras.
No, sir, that, that's 5.4. So we'd have to continue with the.
So. Does. Does he also want to discuss that item now or wait until it come under regular business?
You, one thing you would have to do is wait till after oral communications, but you could do it right. You could bring it forward right after that if you like.
All right. All right, so continue. We have report from City Attorney. I want to thank him for report the item out and I want to verify item number one in the closed section, that only for a short extension because of COVID-19 and assistant city manager already left our city a few months ago. And there will be a public meeting if Sheldon group propose any plan in the future and if city council would like to consider, there will be a public meeting. Next, we have expert communication. None report from City Club. Anything report from City Club?
I have nothing to report tonight.
Thank you. Next, we have special presentation. We have only item in this presentation that is proclamation, Black April, April 38th, 2020. So I'm going to read that because you know, this, this event really important for our city and the community as well. So proclamation, Black April, April 38th, 2020, whereas April 38th, 1975 marked a day of great importance in both Vietnamese and American history. And whereas known as the fall of Saigon, April 38th, 1975 was a day South Vietnam was captured by the North Vietnamese communists, which ultimately ended the Vietnam War. And whereas as many as 250,000 South Vietnamese soldier and nearly 60,000 American soldier died during the Vietnam War, there are Vietnamese and American veterans still with us today in Westminster. And whereas the sacrifices of these soldier and the memory of their courageous act will never be forgotten. And whereas April 30th is annually known as Black April or Thanh Du Đen and is a day to lament and reflect upon the fall of Saigon and the fall of South Vietnam. Whereas in commemoration of the 45th anniversary of Black April, the city of Westminster will fly the South Vietnamese flag half-staff at the Vietnamese-American World Memorial at Citgoast and Freedom Park from April 22 through April 30th. And whereas at 10 AM on April 30th, the commemoration raid will be placed at the memorial site. Now therefore, I treat her mayor to City Westminster on behalf of Vice Mayor Kim Lee Ho and council members, Sergio Contreras, Tito and Chi Chaling Nguyen do hereby proclaim April 30th, 2020 as Black April in the city of Westminster in honor of the 45th anniversary of the fall of Saigon and encourage our resident observer, a moment of silence in memory of our fallen brothers who sacrificed their life for freedom. So that is proclamation declaring Black April in remembrance of the fall of Saigon. Next, we have order communication.
Yes, I have one speaker card from Terry Rains.
Please.
A minute, I will bring her up. Terry, are you with us?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Good evening, Terry Rains, Westminster. Don't start the timer yet for me because based on the city attorney's comment after my closed session comments, the city is in violation of the Brown Act codes 549545 and 549568. Furthermore, the city attorney just reported that that discussion was not about the terms and price of a real property negotiation, but rather from the, about an extension of the E and A in place. That has to be in public session, not in closed session. So there's another violation of the Brown Act. Now I'll get on to my regular comments. Item 5.3 is a regular, a review of the open contractual purchase orders. This item was requested by Councilman Doe and a member of the community, but staff should have already been working on it and much more. If most open purchasers expire at the end of the fiscal year, June 30th, we have less than two and a half months left. The review was to determine which ones could be terminated, those for non-essential services and not contractually or funding obligated. Terminating those would save about 163,000 for the remainder of the year and annualized that number would only be about 782,000 or 1.2% of the annual budget. We do not yet have a budget for the 2021, but the projection in last year's for 2020, 2021 was already a $1.2 million deficit prior to the fee increases before COVID-19 with a projected 12.9 for major SS, which will sunset in 2022. It doesn't take a finance genius to know the city will be gravely impacted economically by COVID-19. Revenues from sales tax, property tax and other fees and taxes will be dramatically reduced. It will likely take us years, not months to recover, even with our rainy day reserves. Many cities in Orange County are already taking drastic action and making tough decisions. Employ layoffs and or furloughs, hiring freezes, not filling open positions, reducing part-time hours, reducing city services, delaying public works projects, trimming office and other supply orders, and yes, renegotiating existing contracts. So while I'm happy the purchase orders were reviewed and some terminated, this is only scratching the surface of what needs to be done. Several mayors in Orange County have been putting out frequent livestream videos on official social media sites, YouTube and or local government cable channels to address their constituents during this public health crisis. They have offered updated information, relief programs and genuine encouragement to the residents, residents and businesses in their cities. Mayor Ta claims that being a mayor is a full-time job. Yet where has he been during this crisis? Has he been a visible, strong compassionate leader? No. Has he reached out to and encouraged the English-speaking residents in our city? No. Or shown support and concern for their businesses? No. However, he and Councilman Nguyen have been flooding the Vietnamese media as usual about the election, about Black April and some about the virus, not always practicing safe social distancing, I might add. Let me quote from Mayor Ta's post-election statement, likely written by Lan Quoc Nguyen. "The voters have given us a clear mandate and we take this mandate as a sacred duty to represent the best interests of all the residents of this great city. Pure lip service. Then, thank you for your overwhelming vote of confidence in retaining the council, council majority as we continue our tireless effort in making Westminster an all-America city a better place to work and live." "Overwhelming, the vote difference was 2,500 to 3,000 votes, only 3% of the total city's total population." "The total no votes were 10,000 of us, so that's about 10% of the population. What about the other 90%? Council majority, don't you get it? That is precisely the problem. You operate and identify as a controlling council majority, not as individual elected officials." Another quote, "We are grateful for this support and we strive to fulfill our pledge to you to make City Hall more responsive and accountable. Striving is not doing and you are not doing." "You thanked your advisors, workers, volunteers and organizations from all around the country. Why is it necessary to get support from all around the country and even the world? Because you made this about race, not facts. Shame on you." "You go on to say you have helped deliver the message of truth to the residents of Westminster and they responded resoundingly. There was no truth in the worldwide generated propaganda that you spewed forth during this election, just hateful lies and personal attacks because you could not defend yourselves against the facts. You lied to and used innocent people and made false claims about race and communism. Again, shame on you." "And the final quotes, and to those of us who did not support me in this election, I promise to work harder to gain your trust, not by words but by deeds. And my doors are always open to you, supporters and opponents alike. You talk the talk, Mayor Ta, but you don't walk the walk. You bend over backwards for your supporters and ignore everyone else in the city and it is duly noted. One resident even mail, emailed you guys yesterday to ask that you reach out to us during this pandemic. No one should ever have to ask you to do something you should already be doing as mayor of this all-America city. November cannot come soon enough. And again, the Brown Act violations, I will be sending a formal letter tomorrow because an E and A extension is a public item. It is not closed session for real property negotiations. And I hope the city attorney realizes that there were multiple issues here, not proper noticing and then improper discussion during closed session. Thank you."
I have no further speakers.
Give everyone an update. I believe that on, on the mark 15, I already sent out an update regarding COVID-19 and the reason why we have to close our city hall. And after that, I believe that our city council, we had a meeting, we came up with and we adopt like the resolution of emergency operation and our city manager. I think that she handled really well and she keep us update every day. And I believe city manager with the support from City Council, issue a lot of like press release and statement. Given update regarding COVID-19 situation in our city. So I think that's all we do. And I think that we continue to do that. We continue to give out information regarding COVID-19 to all the resident of our city will be informed. So I don't know why, you know, the speaker set up, but I appreciate all the comment. That's all I want to say. Next, we have consent calendar. All matter, listen to the consent calendar. I can see the routine and maybe approved by a single motion followed by a roll call vote. There will be no separate discussion of this item unless member city council or staff request that specific item be removed from the consent calendar for a separate action or discussion.
Mr. Mayor, this is Marwan. I'd like, I would like to pull an item, please, if you don't mind.
Yes, please.
It's 3.2. There is a typo there. I just noticed. I'd like to correct that.
So who make the motion? I didn't hear.
I made a motion.
Okay, so Vice Mayor Ho make a motion and who second motion? So Councilmember Contreras second an emotion.
Okay, so that was motion made by Vice Mayor Ho, seconded by Councilmember Contreras to approve the consent calendar except for item number 3.2.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho. Yes. Councilmember Contreras.
Yes.
Councilmember Doe.
Yes.
And Councilmember Nguyen.
Yes.
That motion carried five to zero. Item 3.2.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is Marwan. I'm sorry. I just noticed there's a typo under the recommended, recommended action to, it shows the amount as 31,496. But on the second page of the memo, under the fiscal impact, that number really should be 285,496. So that's what the number should be. And then it is listed also in detail on the table attached. And if you like a detailed report, I'll be glad to do that.
Any, any comment or any question or concerns for member of the city council? If not, so may I have a motion to brew item 3.2?
Motion to approve.
Second. All right, motion approved by Councilmember Nguyen, second by Councilmember Doe.
Okay. Okay. Mayor Todd.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho.
Yes.
Councilmember Contreras.
Yes.
Councilmember Doe.
Yes.
Remember Nguyen.
Yes.
And that motion carried five to zero to approve the West Orange County Water Board's fiscal year twenty 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 twenty-one budget. In Beach, Seal Beach, and Garden Grove.
All right, next we have special business, item five point one, a franchise agreement for bus shelter and benches within a city public right of way. Any question or concerns or may I have a motion?
They asked for the stop report, I guess, with Sherry.
Yes.
They asked for the, you know, an update on that, you know, how is the rate compared to five years ago when the contract, when we initially got the contract with them?
Sure. Mr. Mayor, member of the council, again, this is Marwan. Our bus shelters and bus benches, the current contract was for a ten-year period. And the ongoing rates, we had it in two portions. One is the bus shelters and one is the bus benches. For the bus shelters, the current rate is four hundred eighty dollars per year, plus or twenty-five percent of the revenue, whichever is greater. And most of the time, over the ten years, we've exceeded the minimum, so we were getting the twenty-five percent. This new contract, instead of four eighty a year, now we're getting six fifty a year, plus or the twenty-five percent whichever is larger. Also, for the bus, the bus benches, we have, the previous contract did not give us a minimum, but it gave us fifteen percent of the revenue. However, the new contract goes for hundred fifty dollars per bench minimum, plus or fifteen percent whichever is larger. And then I understand also Commissioner Wen, you also have, I mean, Councilman Wen, sorry, you ask how many bus benches and how many bus shelters we have. We have one hundred eighty-six bus stops in the city, and we have ninety-nine bus benches and hundred thirty-six bus shelters. And the part of the new contract is for the company to bring all bus shelters and all bus benches to standards, new paint, making them look brand new. They already started that on Bolsa, and then they already completed those on Bolsa. If you notice, they look the most green, and they will continue to do the rest of the of those benches and shelters in the city. And this, this contract is going to be for five year instead of ten year, and then it'll be renewable for another five years after that. And that's all I have.
Marwan, Public Work Director, so any other, any other question from Councilmember?
I just have a comment. It sounds like a, I mean, it sounds like they're doing more than just advertising, so I'd like to move the motion.
So may I have a second?
A second.
Second, okay.
Before you vote, can I just, I just want to clarify, Marwan, it is for five years? So I know originally in the agreement, they put a ten-year term in there. I just want to be sure we're talking five years.
Yes, the agreement you have, Christian, has been modified. The ten years was changed to five years.
Okay, just wanted to be clear.
Yes, it is, it is for exactly for an initial five-year period with one five-year renewal.
All right, got it. See you, Clark. So we have a motion and a second on the floor.
Yes, we have a motion made by Councilmember Contreras, seconded by Vice Mayor Ho. And that is to approve the franchise agreement with focus group. Bus benches for term of five years with a five-year renewal option.
Yes.
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 Councilmember Doe.
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen.
Yes.
That motion carried five to zero.
Next item five point two, resolution expressing support of local government employees as essential worker during COVID nineteen pandemic. So I think this resolution go along with, I think, I think, I think the statement from our, our, our city manager issued a few days ago. But I think that's really helpful that our city council, again, to look into the resolution. I want to thanks Councilmember Contreras for bringing it up last meeting.
I moved to approve.
Second.
My second.
Right, we have a motion, a second to approve this item, five point two.
Yes, that was a motion from Councilmember Contreras, seconded by Councilmember Doe. And that is to adopt a resolution entitled a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Westminster, expressing support of local government employees as essential workers during the COVID nineteen pandemic. So Mayor Todd.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho.
Yes.
Councilmember Contreras.
Yes.
Councilmember Doe.
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen.
Yes.
And that motion carried five to zero.
Next item five point three, review of open contractual purchase orders. Any question for our city manager? Any question from any council member?
No, please.
So we have a motion from who?
Yes, actually, I have a question.
Yes, please. Vice Mayor Ho.
The pages are not numbered. Under Intervest, Interwest Consulting Group, any consulting group, especially that and Malad and Associates. So that would be like the, these pages are not numbered. But I was just wondering, plan checks, inspections, and staffing, could you elaborate, please? And plan check and building inspection.
Yes, so I'll ask Alexa to respond to those, if you don't mind.
Sure, they, they are on-call services for when additional backfill is needed. It's also through those firms that we offer expedited plan check. So we, we have a bench, if you will, of a few different consulting firms that that are used on an as-needed basis. Right now, we aren't using any of them, but it is something that that we offer to customers at the counter that want expedited plan checks. Then we, we utilize one of those firms.
So when you have an amount remaining, could you explain that?
I can, I can.
Which you allocated or why is there amount remaining as if we owe them?
So I can respond to that. So when we open a purchase order, it's at a specific dollar amount, and as we work that dollar amount, the amount remaining is what is still open on that purchase order. So that amount remaining will stay open until June thirtieth. And at that point, we'll decide we're not going to use this anymore, and we'll close it out. So the amount remaining is just what has not been spent to date.
But we are being reimbursed by the developers or whoever comes to the counter, right? We are being reimbursed by them, correct?
Right, we do, we do charge fees, yes.
Okay, so amount remaining, I still don't understand that.
So the remaining is the amount, so when we open a purchase order to say, let's say, Malad, we'd open it at, say, thirty to thirty thousand, and as we have invoices to apply to that, that balance will reduce, and it'll stay open. You know, whatever we have not spent or have not invoiced will stay open and not, may not get completely used. In fact, a lot of these don't get used, but it'll be at the end of the year.
In June or the end of the year, fiscal year.
Fiscal year.
So Placeworks, the same thing, same situation?
Okay. Like Placeworks is our consultant that we're utilizing on the Westminster Mall specific plan. So we're contracted with them for the specific plan and associated environmental work.
I see. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
I don't know if it's related to this, if it's the same item, but I do recall in the past where we would review our contracts with current vendors that we've had for a certain period of time, just to make sure that we're gaining the biggest bang for our buck. For example, street sweeping would be an example. I know we have various vendors again that were, that were just, that we trust for, we trust and we work with, but is that also part of this process or is that the next step?
That's usually part of the budget process, especially, you know, especially this year. We will definitely be looking at contracts that are ongoing and that we do have an opportunity to, you know, if we're not under contract for an extended number of years, that we can actually look and see if we can renegotiate or, you know, if we're still in needs of those services. So yes, it is something we are always look at.
All right, any, any other comment? If not, may.
Yes, if I may. Okay, if we may make a short comment, please. I just want to thank staff for taking the time to go through all the essential purchases and, you know, put on hold those that we don't really need to purchase right now because of the economic impact it's gonna, we're gonna face because of the COVID nineteen. I'm sure we're gonna have a budget study session coming up in a couple of weeks, and hopefully we can learn something about our financial situation in the next year or so because of this crisis, so. You know, this is, I know it's difficult because for the staff to go through these purchase order and and make a decision whether or not it's essential for the city business. But, you know, right now, we need to, we need to look at closely our budget to, to make sure to, so we'll get ready to face the crisis we're gonna face the next coming fiscal. Thank you.
I think there's a motion on that right already, right?
Who make a motion?
Motion approved.
I have Councilmember Doe making the motion. Who seconded it?
I seconded it.
Okay.
Great. And even file the report, so Mayor Todd.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho.
Yes.
Councilmember Contreras.
Yes.
Councilmember Doe.
Yes.
And Councilmember Nguyen.
Yes.
And that motion carried five to zero.
All right, so the, like the next item, five point four is the item that brought up by Councilmember Contreras.
As I mentioned previously, and I, I apologize for getting head start. Again, what, what, my intention behind this item is to expedite the testing process here in Westminster. I mentioned before, our neighboring cities, especially Long Beach, has a number of testing sites, which is less than, you know, sixty miles away, depending where you live. And we, I would like, I, I think that it's time that we look at other options to figure out how we can get our residents tested, especially our vulnerable population and those that are concerned. And so I am requesting that we direct the city manager to work with the county to see if we can get one of those new testing sites to provide testing for Westminster residents as soon as possible. If not, if that is not happening for the next, you know, few weeks to a month, or maybe longer, that we work to, to finding a, a, build a relationship with a private contractor. I know a number of cities are already doing the same, working with different contractors to provide testing for their residents. And on top of that, I know that funding isn't going to be an issue for something like that. And I am aware that FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management Agency, is providing reimbursement up to seventy-five percent for the cost of anything related to COVID. So again, I'd like to, again, direct city manager to go out, work with the county, depending on the time we get from the county, also look at an option of, of working with a private vendor to provide testing for our residents. In addition to that, pursue federal funding. And also on top of that, I'm aware that the governor is looking at white testing program, that when that becomes online, that we apply as soon as possible so that we able to get some of those, those state testing resources as soon as possible for our residents, as we, as they become available.
Yes, I want to, I want to report for City Council regarding issue of COVID nineteen that I've been working with other, almost other mayor from the county. And I think that you received the email a few days ago that, I mean, our city, we join with the county and all thirty-three city in issued a letter to ask, you know, for federal funding. And we, we hope that we will receive that soon, but it's still, you know, we continue to work with other, other city. I want, and every week, you know, we being a city manager and I, we participate in a call conference with other city mayor regarding COVID nineteen. So I appreciate that Councilmember Contreras bring this item up. So all city council, all members of the council, we have opportunity to discuss. So with that, I ask the city manager to give us an update regarding the federal funding and the request from Councilmember Contreras.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, as you said, we've been reaching out to other, to, under a coalition of the mayors. We have been reaching out and asking for some of the federal money that's been coming down. I'm not sure how successful that will be, but we're gonna keep fighting and hopefully get somewhere at some point. But this, I know that in those discussions, we've been pushing for testing and, sorry, pushing for testing and it's good to see that now that the county is getting some money, that they're gonna start opening some, some test sites, so that's, that's good news. And we will start looking into, if this council desires, we will definitely start looking into getting one of those test sites in our city.
I, I have a questions. Do we know that, do we know any tests that be approved by the FDA or is this just something that, other testing procedure, is anything that been approved by the FDA yet, or it's just still something that we, we have to buy from overseas? That's not being approved yet. Do, do we have any idea?
I, I'm aware that there are a number of vendors that are already doing this citywide. I know there are a lot of snake oil salesmen out there that are also peddling these tests, but I do know that there are legit people that the county of Los Angeles is working with, one that's operating out of San Dimas. But there are different vendors out there. I mean, this is not just someone's friend who has an idea. These are professional companies, so I do know they're out there. And again, with this, if we give the city manager direction, she can verify some of those partners with our neighboring cities.
So I have a question that regarding Councilmember Doe concern. So there is our city council, we want to work with any vendor or we just want to work with FDA-approved testing kit vendor?
For me.
I, I think, I'm great, go ahead.
Vice Mayor Ho.
Well, for me, I, I am not aware of any FDA-approved test, and I think, I think FDA approval will take a long time from now. But I know that I, all the information's out there and everything I read. I know that people are purchasing their tests overseas, either in mostly Korea. And I just want to make sure we are aware, number one is, you know, I know that a lot of people are probably price gouging, you know, and make sure that if we're gonna go private, we should be very careful and, 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 you know, make sure we go through a good thorough vetting process of our vendors or partners, private partners. And because I know that there are people out there trying to make money doing this, and so it wouldn't be fair to our residents. So anything, especially, you know, that might open up to some legal concerns, and I'll let the, our attorney, city attorney chime in on that. But I know that there are tests, and the only thing is, I, I can say that they're not FDA-approved tests.
I like to, I like to recommend, based on my observation, that because this is a field that I believe Vice Mayor Ho really similar with. So I'd like to recommend that Vice Mayor Ho will work closely with the city manager regarding this issue. I hope that Vice Mayor Ho would not mind.
Are you a profession, I mean, scientist or, I mean, I might, I didn't catch that part.
I saw. I'm sorry.
I didn't know you were in the field of, in the same field.
Oh, my background is, of course, I have a pharmacology background. So anything relating to the FDA and process of getting FDA is really my area of expertise. And of course, you know, when it comes to how sciences, that's, that's my, that's been my studies. And so I'd be happy to, you know, look into whatever or actually listen to whatever staff findings are whenever needed.
And I mean, I like to be part of that process, given that I brought that in forward and that I know that there are a number of cities. For example, again, Long Beach, Baldwin Park, just to forward resources to the city manager so that we can find something that's plausible. If that's not the case, then it's not the case. But I definitely want to make sure we do our due diligence and work with neighboring cities. Because I don't want to reinvent the wheel here. I'm just trying to find the fastest, most efficient and effective solution for, for the current situation here with the lack of testing.
Yes, of course, you're all members of the city council, you know, you all, you, you more than welcome to work with the city manager every day. Regarding issue of COVID-19. But yes, so Councilmember Contreras, Vice Mayor Ho, yes, you too. This item that you bring it up, but I, however, I still believe that Vice Mayor Ho, she have knowledge to understand whether or not FDA approved or not FDA approved. So, but I, I think that we leave that to the city manager, right? Okay. Do we need to make a motion on this or no?
Do we need to make a motion?
I think you should have a, I think you should have a motion on it.
Okay.
To give, to give authority to the city manager to go forward and.
All right.
Set up a, a relationship.
The motion to direct city manager to work with in the county, provide testing site as possible for Westminster residents. If not possible, work with the private relationship. In addition to that, pursue any federal funding through FEMA to cover the cost. And, and to apply for any state testing resources as they become available.
Okay. So Vice Mayor Ho, you want to second on that?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So I have a motion from Councilmember Contreras and seconded by Vice Mayor Ho. So Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Contreras?
Yes.
Councilmember Doe? Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Hello. And Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Yeah, that motion carried five to zero.
Okay. Next item, item six point one, Declaration of Resole of April seven, twenty twenty, Special Municipal Recall Election. So may I have a motion? Does he only like the council adopt the resolution?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
That motion from Vice Mayor Ho, seconded by Mayor Ta, and that's two resolution of the mayor's city council, the city of Westminster, reciting the Act of the Special Municipal Recall Election held on April seventh, declaring the result of such other matters as provided by law. Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Contreras?
Yes.
Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
And Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
And that motion carried five to zero.
All right. So next we have common and request for agenda items from City Council Agency Member, including A B one, two, three, four, report when required. So who would like to go first? Vice Mayor Ho, you like to go first or no?
I'll go last.
Okay, you're the last. Oh, how about next? Who'd like to go first? I cannot, I can't see any hand. Okay.
I got questions with the city attorney. You know, the comment that Terry Rain made earlier, that's the, this particular closed session discussions, it should be a public discussion. Is any, is any truth to that? Because I remember that the last, the last thirty days tension, there was a public session.
Let me, let me respond. The E and A has terms and conditions within it. Those terms and conditions are subject to the council approval. The council did discuss a close session with terms. Those terms relate to the underlying base in a, which would, which would then ultimately be supported by a development agreement. The council can discuss it publicly if they so desire by announcing the vote at a closed session, the communications, what occurred, that does satisfy the Brown Act requirement. Again, there is one issue which was a legitimate issue raised by her. That was the question of the posting. We clarified that as well, that with respect to this property does involve the Sheldon project, which was not stated on the agenda. So we clarified that issue and we have related the actions of the council publicly as were discussed in closed session.
Okay. So we did, did we get the whole of Terry Rain and advisor that issue before we continue with a closed session or? I remember we're trying to get her back into the.
I think we tried to reach her and we tried to clarify, we came at a closed session. Christian did spend some time elaborating what the discussion was and what the property was. We clarified that situation. If she wishes to correspond with us, we'll be happy to respond back to her, given her request and concerns.
Okay. So we, we're good, right? There's no Brown Act violation?
We're fine.
But, okay, thank you. I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank you, city staff, for continuing to work to take care of the city in this, in the crisis. And this is devastating crisis that's affect everybody in the city. It's affect individual businesses. How's our city itself, you know, and talking about the financial situation, the fact the cell tax and the revenue is going, we're going to face. My prayer to everybody and thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Doe. And who would like to go next? I can't see hand in. So Councilmember Nguyen would like to go next or Councilmember Contreras?
Yeah, I can go.
Okay, please.
First of all, I would like to thank our interim city managers started out with one-to-one meeting every week. I think is really a, a good meeting. I think it's a productive meeting, you know, when we have a chance to, to talk about the issues and, and, you know, and I don't know things that might be worst during the community, you know, the meeting, I think is, is a very, very good way of doing business. I also want to thanks the, the staff for working really hard during this COVID-19. I know many of you, I, I visit there, you know, I saw that you guys working really hard, trying to get the, the job done. I know how difficult is that for you right now, but hang in there. I hope that, you know, everything will be okay after all. Also today, I heard that the mayor at beginning of the meeting, he also make a special presentation proclaiming proclamation for the April thirtieth event. I would like to, before I go into that, I want to make sure that I have a question for the staff here. On my hand here, so I have three different version of CD of Westminster press releases. And one of them is on the April third, the next one is April ten, and the third one is April twentieth. All of these three are talking about the COVID-19, okay, in from giving information out to the public. Apparently that we heard from the oral communication. I don't know whether it's, it's, you know, it's out there for everyone to, I know it's on the website. I printed out from the website. So I know it's on the website, but is there, was there any other communication or media that we sent our press release out? So that it can be, you know, a more to the, the publics.
I want to thanks Councilmember Nguyen for brought that up. But I think that as I am aware that after our city, after our city manager issue any statement or any press release regarding COVID-19, I believe that, you know, be paused on our website, on our social media and our city staff. Send out to all the media newspaper in our city. However, I want our city manager explain to that. I really appreciate Councilmember Nguyen for bringing that up because, you know, that we've been issue a lot of statement, a lot of press release, a lot of information regarding COVID-19. But still, some resident may not be aware of that. City manager, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Yes, we do. All that you said, we do release everything out to media in a, in a normal manner. And we can't always guarantee that they will actually, you know, pick up our press release. And we've also been trying to do a lot of our stuff in, in trilingual, so some Spanish, some Vietnamese. That takes some work on our part with the limited staff that we have here. But, you know, we've been trying our best to get information out that we can, because we are, we do understand that in this time, it's not everybody sees the internet. Everything that are, are basically one individual who keeps updating our staff and she's doing a heck of a job. And I have to commend her on that. There's a lot, I'm sorry, moving enough here. There's a lot that we throw at her and she's been doing a great job. And yes, we do get this press release out to multiple media sources.
Okay, can I also, can I make a recommendation? I don't know how, how we can gather the, the emails from the public. But maybe we ask if, if the public wants to, they can give us the email. And when every time that we have press release, we can mass email out to everyone. That way it come right into their, their phone, you know, they, they can see it. I just want to make sure that we, we have, you know, we use all the means to, to, to fill out the, the information to the people. So I don't know whether it's feasible or not, but you know, that might be a, a better way to, to do too.
So Councilmember Nguyen, if I can, if I can actually jump in, hello. So currently we do have on our website a news feed. And so members of the public can actually subscribe to the news. Every time we post something onto the news feed, it gets sent out to subscribers. So we do have a certain amount of subscribers that are currently getting updates. In addition, you know, we, we have been posting our press releases and any other pertinent information on our city's website, which is Westminster hyphen C A dot G O P, as well as our project Westminster Offshoot or Project W website, which is projectwestminster.com. And you can, you can access the coronavirus updates on, you know, through either of those pages. And we've actually put out not only our press releases, but links to outside agencies. You know, we had the small business loan application that's there. People wanted to report businesses that were, you know, that are maybe open that are not essential. It's on there, everything from the rental eviction moratorium and just guides that we've created internally that we've passed out to, you know, to residents or emailed, you know, that has listings of where they can potentially get food or where they can, you know, sign up for, you know, senior meal program, you know, those types of resources. In addition, we also post regularly on our social media, which we're, we're mainly on Facebook and Instagram. Our Westminster Police Department has its own Instagram in which they also share the stuff that we post regarding COVID-19 as well as, you know, as well as information that is catered to their department. In addition, we do have a media contact list relatively modest at the moment, but, but we are building on that. So anytime that we have, you know, someone from the media who's interested and it's for Vietnamese, Spanish and English media, we do send out the press releases. So there are different avenues that we are sending things out. We are sending some of these releases out to, you know, to some of our, our, our neighboring media contacts as well. Just anyway that we're able to, to disseminate information, we're, we're trying to. So if anyone asks, we refer them to a website. You know, anybody sends an email, they'll send them to our, you know, to our website and we encourage everyone our COVID-19 page.
Yes, I know that we can control the, the social media and also we can control our, our website. But do you have any tracking of when you sent out the press release to the media? Do they printed it or?
Though unfortunately, we can't control what the media prints.
No, no. What I'm trying to say is we follow to make sure, you know, it's effective, they, they did print for us.
We try to track as much as we can. Unfortunately, we don't have the resource or the program to track those types of analytics to see who is actually printing and posting. I mean, obviously we follow, you know, we'll follow the Register and, and the Times and, you know, the Herald Journal and some of the local papers. And then I do get responses back from some of the Vietnamese newspapers that, yes, they'll print or, you know, they'll, they'll put something out there. But, you know, but unfortunately we don't have, we, we don't have the resources. You know, knowing that our communications program is, is very, you know, it's, it's relatively new as far as how aggressive we're being, you know, with, with, you know, with the media strategy, et cetera. We just don't have the resources for, for something that specific at the moment. But we're trying to monitor as we can.
All right. Thank you very much. And going back to, because we are in April, Black April, Tampa. And I was, I was going over some of the documents and some of the resolutions from. And I saw that, you know, in, on March twenty ninth is the National Vietnam War Veteran Day. And also that from our state, there is also ACR sixty-three veterans of Republic of Vietnam Armed Forces that was proposed by Assemblyman Alan Menso. And also the other one is SCR eighty, eighty-six Veterans of Republic of Vietnam Armed Forces in twenty eighteen. What I want to do is I want to put on the agenda for the next meeting. I would like to agenda is two items. One is for March twenty ninth as Vietnam War Veteran Day. And on June nineteen is Veterans of Republic of Vietnam Armed Forces Day. Do I have to have two item differently or it can be approved into one as, as the next meeting?
I'm sorry, you indicated March twenty nine. Is it May twenty nine?
March twenty nine, March twenty nine.
They're already passed.
Yes, this is for next year.
Okay, for now. Okay, just clarify.
So I think there's a request to add those two items to the agenda for the next meeting. And, but when they would be listed on the agenda, they'd be listed as two different items. But you can take one vote right now to add both items if you like.
All right. So I'd like to make a motion to, okay, so I'd like to, I'd like to second, Councilmember Nguyen, motion.
Vice Mayor, I'm sorry, Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho? Did we lose her? Vice Mayor Ho? Yes. Councilmember Contreras?
Yes.
Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
And that motion carried five to zero.
All right. So Councilmember Nguyen, you have anything?
No, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Contreras?
Thank you, sir. I want to, I know that we're still looking into the, the CARES Act funding. I know that we may or may not receive funding and we're still kind of, trying to figure that piece out. But I like to place an item on the agenda for next council meeting and direct the city manager to prepare an emergency rental assistance program with community development block grant funds when they become available in the next round of CARES on the Federal CARES Act. Again, it's wishful thinking, but I want to make, I want to see us put something together that would, when that funding becomes available, would be able to use to help a lot of these families that are here in Westminster that are now unemployed. I know that we have a moratorium at the moment that's going to help some families. And, and we have the ninety-day rent mortgage relief program provided by the state with some banks. But I do believe that there are a number of families out there that are. But I do believe that there are a number of families out there that are not going to be able to stay afloat for a while after this, after we resume and we get back to. If and and when we ever get back to business is normal, but I, I do want to look at a, at a rent subsidy program, maybe, you know, a thousand dollars a month to help for up to three months to help families. But again, this funding would come from the CARES Act funding when it becomes available.
Yeah, I like, I like our city, city manager to respond to that because I work closely with other city mayors and city manager regarding federal funding. So city manager?
Thank you, Mayor and so Councilmember Contreras, we do have some things in the works and I'm going to ask Alexa Smidall, our interim community development director to speak on that if I might.
Let me just jump in real quickly to say we can have brief comment on this, but we would, the main issue here is putting it on the next agenda. We can't get into, we can't get into a discussion about it. So the, a brief comment from, from the city manager or Alexa would be appropriate, but we should probably vote on it after that, whether it's going to go on next time or not.
We are working on that. Can I say that much? I don't know where to go. Yes, we, we, we do have some, we do have some additional CARES funding has been allocated through the C D B G program. We know what amount the city is getting and yes, we, we are working on it.
Well, I would like to, again, just because priorities do come up and things do change and they are fluid. So I'd like to request we place on the agenda for them for that discussion and to elaborate on this item. Again, to make sure we have a strong program for Westminster families.
So I second, Councilmember Contreras request for the next agenda.
To that. So Mayor Todd?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho? Vice Mayor Ho?
Yes.
Yes. Hi, Councilmember Contreras?
Yes.
Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
And that motion carried five to zero.
And then the second part of my request. I know we've, we're working, I, I know the web, we're doing our best update our city website to provide a small businesses support. I'm wondering if we're looking, if we have, I, I haven't had a chance to have a conversation with city manager, so I don't want to put on a pub quiz for her. I just want to see if we can look into identifying additional support or funding. I know it's being monitored to help our small businesses. I know that there are a number of disgruntled small business owners that weren't able to get a piece of the pie for the last round of, for the first round of funding and are waiting to see how they qualify for these small business loans. Is there, I don't know if it should be an item that we aggressively look for additional funding or is it something that's already being done?
So I know that there's a three point five out there, Act three point five act that's going to address some of the small businesses that did not get to participate in that first funding and went pretty quickly. So I know that's out there and going to be approved at some point going forward.
But as a city, we as a city, do we have anything prepared for small businesses that go beyond that funding?
Not currently.
Help? No?
No.
Okay, well, then I'll just dig around a little more and come back with something more concrete to, to be clear. I just, I just want to know that we're also looking for our small businesses. And then in closing, I want to thank again city manager and staff and team, everyone that's worked. I hope you guys are enjoying your new hours, your seven AM to five thirty, forty days a week. I think it's, seems to be working out pretty well. I haven't heard any complaints. I want to again acknowledge you guys for working creatively and together and for finding solutions. I know you, you, the city manager had put together an executive order that went out on Monday and then the county went in and did the same thing. So again, I appreciate her leadership and looking for solutions to move us forward during this time. I know sometimes these, these are not popular, but I think doing the right thing to, to save lives and help people is really our role at the moment. And so I want to appreciate you guys and appreciate that everyone working on the website, updating and constantly providing information for our resident. I've spoken.
Councilmember Contreras? Thank you. So Vice Mayor Ho?
Yes. First, I want to thank the interim city manager, Sherry Johnson, for all the communications, including the one-on-one that we started a couple of weeks ago. And the department directors, especially Alexa Smitty, the acting economic development director. It's a very big shoe to, to have to fill when Chip Simmons left. I, I believe that there's so much to do move forward as well as, to move the city forward as well as to attend to some of the things that are going on due to COVID nineteen. And I, I just think that the first thing I want to talk about is to see if we could take this opportunity knowing that Alexa has been working very closely with our planning department and, and knowing that because of, of this COVID nineteen that do you know, that whole development process and everything is kind of coming to a halt. It's not a screeching halt. There's still some, somewhat. People are still, you know, putting through, going through the process of, or trying to go through the process of entitlement for their, for their development. But I, I wanted to make sure we take this opportunity and take advantage of that slowdown and see if we could come up with a plan to better serve the community once we open backup or, or fully open backup for business. And I, I know that with the new software that, as I know, in a go is a new software and all that. I just want to see if we could come up with a plan and, and discuss and, or maybe staff could present next time so that we could, we could, I'd like to agendize that so that we could have something a little more formal than our discussions to see how we could take the, the advantage of this downtime, so to speak. And so that's regarding planning and that, that whole process of entitlement, trying to streamline to see how we could make everybody, help everybody work better together. And, and whether that be something that we could put on agenda to, to, to get and get a, a presentation from you or, or a, a plan from you, you know, we could either open up that discussion or presentation. So that's something that I would like to ask Alexa Smitty to, to, to answer. And maybe we could agenda something like that, Alexa?
Sure, I'd be happy to bring you something. Absolutely.
Okay, so that will be for, for the next agenda. We could vote on that to see if we can agenda some.
Go ahead and second it.
So Mayor Todd? I think you're muted.
Yes.
I'm sorry, can you clarify the motion? I apologize.
To add an item regarding the planning and entitlement process.
Okay.
Reminding it. Mayor Todd, Vice Mayor Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Contreras?
Yes.
Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
And then Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
That motion carried five to zero.
So anything from Vice Mayor Ho? Anything else?
Yeah, just one last thing. Okay, and so basically the county supervisors office, District One. You know, when they asked me to, maybe if anybody, I just don't know how to word out there to facilitate the neighborhood resource pop-up pantries. So they started something what's called a pop-up pantry, pantries. And so basically they could provide the initials, start a pack of goods and they will help make neighborhood signs and all the, you know, all they need really for, for the host. There's any way, any, any way that our staff could help get the word out there or just to let people know. I know that, that we already, they already have some hosts out there, a couple of hosts, but that program just needs to, 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 to just be made known for the community if anybody wants to, to be the host. And is there any, any way I could get some, we could get some help getting the word out there regarding the pop-up pantry?
Is that a request for the next agenda item or is that, is that a question for staff, Vice Mayor Ho?
It's a question. I don't know who that would be for.
Kimberly, I can certainly work with you on that. Do you want to give me a call tomorrow? I can, we can talk about that if that's.
Okay. Yeah, okay, I could send you some pictures and give more ideas tomorrow. Send that forward that information. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Ho. And I want to thanks all the members of the city council for your time. I know this is really difficult time for everyone, but you spend time to read agenda and to participate in the meeting. I really, really appreciate that. I think that, I feel that everyone, you know, on the city council, we start working together that, you know, really, really thankful. And I really want to thanks our city staff, especially for our inner room city manager, basically that I call every day and I talk to every day. And I think that all five of us, we receive an update from our inner room city manager every single day, even over Saturday and Sunday. And every day, you know, you receive a lot of information from the city manager. That mean that she worked, she worked really, really hard with the department head to come up with a lot of information that to email to all members of the city council to keep us, to keep us an update. And like I mentioned, like the past meeting, I had an opportunity more than a month ago at beginning in the operation, emergency operation meeting with, with staff and then county staff. And that was amazing. That's me, our city staff, they all repair at beginning like, like in a week, in a second week of March before we announce anything, before they say announce anything. So our city staff already work with the county staff and it really want to thank all city staff. I really, really appreciate that. Okay, with that, I like to adjourn the meeting. Or city manager, you have anything else that you want to report before I adjourn the meeting?
Nothing at this time, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your hard work. And next regular meeting will be held Wednesday, March thirteenth, twenty twenty, at seven PM. Minutetune.